I'm gonna call a meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Read Resolution 016. And I need a mover and a seconder to open the meeting. Gary, I'm seconded by Clint. All in favor? Gary. Resolution 017, approval of agenda. Pretty straightforward. Any additions or deletions to it? Hearing none. I'll read the resolution 017. Be resolved that the meeting agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of January 9th, 2025 be accepted and approved as presented. Mover and seconder Derrick and seconded by Gail. All in favor?
It's at 6:00 AM, 6:00 AM on the top of the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, we can move right into number three, find-outs. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, the purpose of this meeting is to do our first public review of the draft 2022 financial plan. We've already done some in-camera development strategy sessions on this. And basically, we've utilized to build a base budget and then basically work on that as far as a starting point. And then now council can publicly have discussions on the budget as far as feedback, additions, changes, what their priorities or any changes they wish to make. And this will actually be one where we go to a PowerPoint presentation slides rather than just the actual packages, what we've been dealing with up to date at this time. So, on the first page of the PowerPoint presentation, we've got our agenda. And we'll start off with the same kind of format that we do with our usual annual budgets. We'll start off and identify our budget priorities, our budget assumptions, general operations, we'll go into and go by department by department. Then move into utility operations, Minnetonka and Bozeman. And then go into our capital budgets, our five-year capital plan, as well as reserve utilization and municipal taxation mill rates along those lines. Well, also, instead of having examples, we'll actually show the different approaches that we utilize for the bill rate calculation. Being the fact that legally, we can no longer, as of this year, have a Minnetonka and have a Bozeman separate special levies. We have to go to a base levy. And we can still do special levies on top of this, like for example, garbage or transportation or along those lines. But per the amalgamation that we did back in 2015, they gave us a timeframe that ended as of 2024 fiscal year, where after the 2024 fiscal, we had to go into a base rate approach. So, moving from the agenda, we'll go into the budget priorities. So, for this year, the priorities per the communications we have with council is, first of all, utilities, capital, infrastructure investment. Our infrastructure is aging and we are basically want to make investments along those lines to improve and rejuvenate. Transportation infrastructure, capital investments and rejuvenation. 2022 general operations, utility deficit recovery. As council is aware, we completed our audits for the 2022 fiscal year earlier and deficits were identified that had to be covered. Also, this year, we'll be doing probably close to a full year of the RCMP GIS section unit that we have to actually contribute towards the funding. We want to have also, per earlier council meetings in the summer, competitive public works, utility employee compensation with salary changes that were already approved by council taking effect this year. And then balance, Minnetonka and Bozeman utility budgeting, as per always. Reserve fund growth and for future capital investment. We have our IT services strategy upgrade that has to be financed as well. And then the new citizens on patrol program, which is basically the grassroots program that's taken off and that's actually getting good traction. And the RCMP are watching as well and wanting to provide support. So, for this budget, budget assumptions are basically, these are assumptions that affect every part of our budget. But what we have is they, rather than stating the same assumptions slide after slide after slide, basically, we just state them as overall budget assumptions and they will take effect throughout the entire budget unless specifically stated otherwise. So, the first one is inflation. 2025 bank account inflation rate forecast is 2%. Utility rate changes, Bell MTS is going to be having a, on average, $15 a month rate increase. January 1st, Westman Communications Group internet rate increase is going to be 4.13%. January 11th, 2025 Canada Postal, Canada Post overall rate increases. We don't have that exact number yet, but they are going to be going up relatively high. And that's just part of their recent labor relations settlement that they had. Also, the 2025 Manitoba hydro gas electrical rate increases. Basically, there's none this year because the WAP government has stated they'd be freezing. So, last year, we had big rate increases. But for gas, electricity, they say this year, there would be no increases, which is actually nice to have. Municipalize, our basis is to continue to maintain ongoing quality municipal services. So, we're not withdrawing any programs, we're not reducing any programs. January 1st, 2025, public works utilities marker-based hourly rate increases per approval from council earlier in the year, or earlier in the 2024 fiscal year. Mileage rate increases, 72 cents per kilometer. And April 2025, fees charged and fine change bylaw. That bylaw has not been approved, has not been approved yet. But if it is approved, it's basically scheduled to take effect in April 1st. It has been excluded from this budget at this stage. There's too many small items in there and different new items. We can't really forecast on that. So, basically, those rate increases will be excluded from the budget model that we have and are not included in the revenues that we'll be declaring. And then finally, for this year, no external borrowing. The next slide provides an overview of our general operations budget. And basically, we are striving this year for a $0, basically break-even budget. And we'll then go into the departments one by one and get to more details of each of these line items. So, on general operating revenue, we have, of course, property taxes, mill rates. Bill rate revenue coming in, we also have 2024 penalties and tax levies that were based in the historical, i.e. penalties are hard to estimate, but historically, we can get a good idea of what they actually work into. Then we also have our non-tax revenue. And that's basically, we're continuing handyman operations, we're earning revenues off that. The 2022 duck bond and fire protection agreement is up for renewal, so we put an estimate about in there for that as well. We have $270,760 of Manitoba Water Management Board grants. That's basically all of our infrastructure grants for water, basically, that'll flow through our operating funds, basically, and then go into our capital investments. Then we also have $125,000 Manitoba Grow grant. This was new, it was basically in November of last year, the application deadline. So, we applied for our Ford River Crossing, or Ford Crossing, as well as new roof for our Minnetonka Town Hall. And then we also have the $104,573 Manitoba Hydro grant. That's just last year's amount. We know there'll be a grant this year, but we don't know the amount yet. We also have $75,000 of the announced during the AMM convention by the Manitoba government, the One Manitoba Grow Revenue Grant. There's no details as of today on that. They're saying it's been announced, it's going to be per capita, but how it works, what you have to do to qualify for it, it's detailed, still pending. So, there's a $75,000 revenue placeholder in for that. And then we have estimated flood claims, we just drop it estimated there. And then $11,141 for Manitoba recycling grant.
Just a question on these non-tax revenue or whatever. These revenues don't reflect anything on the taxes themselves, right? This, these aren't, these revenues aren't 100% sure that we're getting them, are we?
Well, again, we're, this isn't first reading. So, what we're doing is, this gives council members the chance to provide any of other inputs, priorities. It could be new programs you want to do, new initiatives you want to do, new purchases. So, at this stage, the model is predicting what it is based on the expenses that we're going to go over. And the way the model that we have right now, it calculates saying, what do we have to generate to cover all of the expenditures? At this stage, we have gone from Minnetonka, Bozeman and at-large revenue generation down to actually the single at-large levy. The calculations did show a different amount than it was on the previous version. So, that's where HMC had provided assistance and converted the model over. The numbers are different now versus what they were before. And we've got a call to Larry Lang to basically provide. It put feedback to say, are we sure this number is correct? But per the model right now, this is what we're expecting to earn, assuming there's no other expenditures going through. Good.
Trevor, the $104,000 Manitoba Hydro grant, what is that? Is that, that isn't the one we're getting from BIPO for 10 years, was it? Because I think if that's the one we were, I think the 10 years were up last year, if that's the grant. I'm not sure, that's why there's need of clarification.
I was gonna ask that same question.
Yeah, just something maybe to check into, I'm not 100% sure. I think it was CDI, whatever, was that the right term for it? I always called it a BIPO.
Yeah, that's what we.
X amount of dollars for 10 years, BIPO crossing municipal property in certain places, so.
But it had a restriction on it, you could only use it for recreational.
Yep, that's correct.
Within the boundaries of the municipality loan.
Yep, that's correct, yep.
So, if we could just maybe check that one when you talk forever. Thank you.
So, going to the general government expenses. Right now, the graph, the first graph for general government expenses just basically shows a pie chart depiction of our 2025 budget. And it includes legislative process or component. The expenses this year, as you'll see in the following slide, are going to be higher this year relative to last year. And that's largely because we now have a full contingent of council members. Before, we were always missing one or two. Now, we have basically two council members here. They've all been assigned to their respective committees. We're having increased council conferences and engagement. We've already got a schedule in here showing councils that have already stated which of the AMM conventions they're going to be attending. They're now currently engaging in all the committee meetings that we have, libraries, economic development, and along those lines. So, those expenditures, because we are at full council staff positions filled and because we are engaging in all full, regular council activities, those are higher this year relative to what was budgeted last year, as well as last year's actuals. So, there's an increase, but just because we have more people. Now, we're fully staffed and we're actually doing a full level of work rather than a reduced, a reduced level. Now, moving to the general administration side. Right now, we have had some staffing changes, but right now, we are currently staffed at 2.5 FTE. And we are currently still trying to recruit for our administrative clerk, too. The advertisements are still at the post, we have a few applicants not filled yet. But right now, we are staffing, rather than two FTE, we're staffing a 2.5 FTE with the potential for more because our part-time person has the flexibility of working additional hours. And if you get the additional one FTE coming in, then that basically be budgeted, that this person would be coming in relatively halfway through the year, just as a rough average. You can't really say when a new employee, when it's going to be hired. When we find one that's suitable, the interview goes well, the reference check, then that's actually when we're going to go into the hiring. But it could be April, it could be May, it could be October, we don't know. But hopefully, it's earlier versus later. But we do have just a mid-year placeholder to say that we're hiring an additional staff member. So, we also have $129,472 for administrative contracts. That's basically for venture accounting, for accounting work. That's basically HFC for some strategic plan work. We've got branded computers for our IT services strategy, or it could be whatever the winner of that actually, IT services RFP is. But basically, branded computer is our temporary service provider, as well as a few other small providers that are basically providing services, which is reflected in that amount. And then we have $35,880, which basically reflects Starlink conversion for the Bozeman and Minnetonka office because that network's engineering service is not great, especially a Bozeman, as well as additional IT hardware purchases and software. Then we have also potential FOIP litigation. There's money set aside, the amount of $120,000. Doesn't mean we have to spend all this, but basically, you need to have it available just in case. Because if these do go to litigation or there's additional FOIP applications that require legal assistance in responding to or addressing, we want to make sure that that funding is there rather than having to curtail other program areas to find funds for that purpose. And then, of course, the $12,000 insurance receivable loss. Council discussion later in the year last year was that we were probably not going to be getting that, I believe it was Curling Club, was it, or?
Pardon me?
I believe it was the Curling Club, that the $12,000. There was one club that we provided insurance premiums to, we sent out the invoices.
Oh, no, it was Lenzwood Hall.
Yes, Lenzwood Hall, thank you, that's the one.
Yeah.
So, $12,000 was set aside because currently, we are showing a receivable for them, but they've communicated with us that they, it may, it may not be collectible. So, if it goes into a write-off, we have to actually expense it and it'll basically be covered by our revenues as well. So, currently, it's showing as short as an asset on our balance sheet, but that'll change, of course, if we have to do a write-off at that time. And then the bar chart, your show is basically the 2000, all of the actual bar charts are 2025, 2024 budget comparison. And then we utilize 2022 actuals primarily because the 2023 data, that's when we had the office closure for three and a half months and council was kind of doing the books. And then we are bringing staff in one by one. Those numbers, I'd rather not have them in the budget model because of the fact that they are still changing a little bit as we complete the actual 2023 audit. But with the 2022 audit completed, those numbers are reliable. Any questions so far? Okay. So, going to protective services expenses. We have the Minnetonka Fire Department. Spending there has increased relative to prior years. And that's mainly because of the fact that we've got the new fire truck that we are currently equipping. We've got hoses, valves, all the equipment that has to go on a new vehicle, that's all purchased. Because the fact that those purchases are typically below $5,000, we expense them rather than capitalize. And then we also have $17,330 of new firefighting safety equipment because we needed to get additional equipment because we have new members and some of our equipment is getting old. So, $27,615 for new fire truck equipping and fitting out, and additional $17,330 for new firefighting safety equipment. And that was just an itemized list that our fire chiefs, if needed, then we went to look at the costs and we basically priced them out one by one. Also, emergency organizations. Currently, we have a $65,000 set aside for the RCMP General Investigation Section Unit. And that's basically reflecting the fact that 60% of funding for that program is coming from the federal, the federal government, the provincial government, so 30-30 split. And the remaining 40% is basically being covered by G4 municipalities. And that's based on a per capita basis. So, our $65,000 basically reflects what we'd be paying for this. But of course, that program hasn't been started yet. So, it's not the full year, it's basically a portion of the year.
That number is a portion of the year, or that's the full year number there, Trevor?
That's a portion because we've, it's January and they're not operating right now. So, it's pretty safe, January, we wouldn't be. So, we estimated that basically it'd be April 1st.
Okay, I was just wondering how far back in the calendar, that's, okay.
So, you're taking four months off out of the year, then?
April, three months write-off, yeah. Because I don't think they're going to be.
First quarter off.
First quarter off, yeah. I didn't want to be too optimistic as far as savings, but it's hard to tell. I mean, we'll probably get a phone call or a meeting saying we've got our members and then that's, it was just, it's just an estimate as far as their start time.
I was just wondering where that fell in the estimate. Because I didn't think that was the full amount for the full year.
No, definitely not, definitely not.
Would it be for the full amount, 80?
I'd have to go back. I believe we were looking at about $100,000, $130,000. Actually, correction, this is, this would be basically July 1st, July 1st of this one. So, $130,000.
Six months.
Yeah, six months, so July 31st, my apologies to that. Clint, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. So, bylaw enforcement, our bylaw enforcement officers' contract is up. We're estimating at $23,800 for bylaw expenditure for the year. And that's returning to the level that we had of our bylaw enforcement operations prior to the time that we curtailed due to the fact that we had bylaws that we were basically going through a bylaw update and review process. So, we've been progressing through that steadily. We'll have those probably per last estimated timeframe, have those completed for April 1st. And then basically, with those bylaws in place, we'll return to regular bylaw activities. And at this stage, we're estimating $23,800 for that. And then, the new mutual aid fire agreement. Currently, there's, similar to last year, although the agreement has not yet been signed, but the discussion has been that there'd be no annual fee for that. Right now, we're just in discussions as far as if there is a situation where not enough ever show up within the one-hour timeframe, whenever that timeframe starts, what would the cost be? And do we want to actually set money aside for that? Currently, we have no budget allocation for that. So, we're saying no annual fee. And we're basically estimating that there'll be no periods where basically we won't be able to respond to emergency call in a period that would be over one hour with less than, less than by members. So, no funding has been allocated for that. So, moving to transportation services expense. We've got the $126,037 increase in fuel has been budgeted for this year. And there's a couple of reasons for that. First, it would be that last year, we had a very mild winter. This winter is not the same as last year, it's already gotten colder. And if we get snowfalls, we did in January, February. Basically, we expect that there'll be more activity required and more fuel burned, of course. And then also, the 2000, the fuel, fuel tax holiday was discontinued. That was a six-month fuel holiday that we had in 2024. It expired per the Act on December 31st. So, that is no longer there, we're back to taxation. Now, with the election situation, our leadership situation, maybe that'll change, but kept it up for this fiscal year. And basically, there was, I have a note here, 2022 diesel allocation error. Just because we're still referring to 2022 data, I wanted to make sure that note was in there because that year, we did do a misallocation across departments regarding our fuel consumption. Also, we have an $84,567 payroll benefits increase. And that reflects basically the increase in hourly wage rates and the corresponding benefits that go with our public works department. So, all of those employees have had their rates increased. It's varied based on skill sets, based on certifications, based on how long with the organization experience levels. So, overall, those wage increases across the board, assuming the hours worked are the hours worked and a little bit of overtime. We've got, that's the cost that would be overall, which would also include the benefit packages as well, like life insurance, disability, along those lines. We also have a, this is a new one for this year, a different approach. $75,000 moderate fleet vehicle repair allocation. So, last year, we had our, one of our graders go down and there was a $57,000 repair, roughly, 50, 55 to 57,000 in that ballpark, which we had budgeted for. So, at this stage, we decided to take a proactive $75,000 allowance, basically allocated across the whole fleet. And the idea of it being that we've got money satisfied in this budget that if we have another major, major vehicle breakdown, we will have a fund that we can actually draw on to basically make those repairs. Of course, if there is no vehicles required repair, that money will just flow into our surplus and then be allocated to our reserves. So, it's just that if something does happen, we don't have to take further program, other initiative areas to basically fund that, fund those repairs.
Does it have to go into reserves or can we use it for general?
You can use it for general, but one of the priorities we set was to build up a reserve. So, I think that would be my suggestion, but council, during the budget year, you could do whatever you'd like. But after the budget year, like I E. into 2026, all surpluses would have to go to reserve per the policies you've already approved. So, also, we set aside $39,000 for shop repairs and tools. So, we've had like various doors that need to be repaired. Basically, we still have employees utilizing personal tools, which is great. I'm glad they stepped forward with those, provide tools that were needed. But it'd be great to have it where they, they don't have to do that because short-term wise, that's fine. But if you're doing it year after year where people's personal tools are being used to maintain municipality operations, it'd be good to replace those tools so that they can take their tools home and have, still have the tools that they need and want to work with in their actual work environment. And then we've got $29,200 set aside. Basically, we are looking to purchase the nutrient buildings. So, if we do purchase them, we've set aside $29,200 of funding to retrofit the buildings, as well as to operate the buildings, if in case that they are actually purchased. And then, similar to last year, there's $26,000 set aside for street repair and graveling and $24,000 set aside for sidewalk remediation. We set $24,000 aside last year, but we never actually got to it, primarily because we couldn't get a contractor available to come into the work. So, we're going to try again this year, which is why the $24,000 is still there.
That's 12 and 12 in each community, yeah.
12 and 12, exactly, yep.
And the airport commission is, our levy is 31,250?
It's further down, I think, so, we're not there, yeah. That's more economic development, it is there, but we're not quite at that, at that department.
Okay, I was just going to, what's on here and what's on the pie chart? We're reading the pie chart, dark green, right to the airport.
Let's see here, transportation.
Pardon me?
It does say airport, dark green.
Yeah.
31,250.
Oh, then, yes, it is. So, airport's in there. But I will put a note on that because I think you may have it also in the spot as well.
You were looking at the pie chart in the color, I wondered what you were talking about, that's, yeah.
It's there, I see it right there.
Yeah, now there, yeah.
Yeah.
And then I was also going to ask a question on, is there gravel crushing? Wouldn't be on, under transportation, but would it be under? Where did it go to, the cost of crushing the gravel?
Rural road maintenance, I think.
Is that where it went? Or does it go into that?
So, what I did with the gravel crushing is, we took last year's actuals because this is what we actually did, we adjusted it. On this one, actually, I don't have the detail sheet in front of me, but I believe we used an average, or it could have been basically 2023 because 24 was more mild. But basically, when we expense it, we put that amount in for the expense. But in the additional gravel crushing, that would be basically going into piles for inventory. So, you've got cash being spent, but it's not going to expense, it's going to asset. So, you're going, your cash, your cash balances are being depleted, depleted. And basically, your gravel inventory asset is being increased.
So, that's why it doesn't show up.
It doesn't show up on the statement, but it does show on the balance sheet. So, if we did last year's same amount of graveling, then basically, we've captured it on the historical expense analysis. And then if we are doing another $100,000 more gravel crushing, that would basically be not an expense, but just go into inventory. That would be expensive when we draw down that inventory.
So, there could be a possibility of $50,000 less because we had to move half of the top of a mountain off to get at the gravel. And I think what's coming up for this year, whatever, it's, it'll be just a fraction of that cost.
Easier for top, overburden or whatever.
Yes, I think it was, off the top of my head, was it like $50,000 extra?
50 or 70, somewhere in there, between that, I think, 50 for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then, with that being said, whatever, and if we have a good run of it or whatever, and then we have the extra money, then we could do the extra yardage, too, with the money available, so if we just leave it as it, or?
So, the expense would be recognized because you're inventorying, but the cat, the, the dollars would still be leaving the bank account. So, our, it's just our bank funding, funds that are available. That would be, we're still spending money, we're just not recognizing the expense to the following year. So, it would depend on our bank balances, what we actually have in there versus covering our operations. If there's extra, we could then utilize that for, for the gravel crushing.
Yep. Everybody else kind of follow that?
So, moving to health and welfare and planning expenses. Basically, $25,392 has been set aside for medical professional recruitment catch-up payments. That's because we had the one year where we didn't actually make the payment because there was no contract, no agreement signed. So, reflecting that expenditure being caught up. So, it's basically, in the, in the actual bar chart, you'll see it's quite high because it's two years versus just one. And then we have also $5,000 set aside for sunken grave surface remediation. Also, the employee hourly wage increases that we went through before resulted in a $4,400 and $3 payroll benefit increase in this area. And then we also had the 2023 one-time Swan Valley Planning District Survey. That was in 2023, so it was, actually, that shouldn't be there, we're using 2024, two historical data, my apologies, I'll take that out. And then also, we had the 2022 major weather event damage monuments. So, that's why the actuals look a little bit different relative to the budget. Because in 2022, there was one-time unexpected, not typically reoccurring expenditure in 2022, which is reflected in the actuals that we have for 2022.
So, that was the cost of fixing the Centotaph?
It was way more than that. The everlasting memorials that did that? Yeah.
So, that's what this year?
I don't think that is that, that must be something else.
Or, did we get that big rain in the 22 flood?
Well, we did, but major event weather damage monument repairs, I'm not, yeah, I wasn't sure where that was done, actually. Like, our Centotaph was repaired, was damaged prior to 22. But it got repaired in 22. So, I'm, yeah. I'm not 100% sure on this one, Trevor, what it is. I'm not a hundred percent sure on this one, Trevor, what it is exactly.
Did you want me to take it as a takeaway to find out?
If you don't mind, please.
Yep.
Yes, he was, yeah. I'm just gonna put takeaway on my sheet for that one.
So moving to economic development, we have, this is just basically focusing on the, on the changes. So pest and predator control, we've set aside, or we're proposing thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars for one hundred and seventy-seven coyotes, seventy-five dollars each. During two thousand twenty-four, we paid the same amount. We've just increased the amount a little bit as far as the quantity. And then six thousand six hundred and ninety for two hundred and twenty-three beavers at thirty dollars each, and that's basically just to protect the infrastructure from beaver damming. Also, if we have another year where coyotes are coming closer to the communities of Bozeman and Minnetonah, we've got money set aside to address that issue earlier on a more proactive basis, so the funding is there just to make sure. It doesn't mean we have to actually spend it all, but we just have the capacity in our budget to actually do so if we need to. And then regional initiative for stronger economic rise. Last year, we basically stopped providing the grant to rise, and then last year, they had that one economic promotional magazine that we contributed to, which was still one project that we did contribute to. But currently, there is no budgeted rise funding for initiatives that we are currently funding the budget. If council wants to bring new ones forward, we can, but at this stage, the decision to take the grant down was basically made in two thousand twenty-four with the one remaining magazine development, and now that's been published. There's nothing new as far as funding requirements we have for rise. Then moving to continuing housing, continuing in-house website development. So this is basically the one that we have for fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. This is pretty much a repeat from last year, plus two percent for inflation. And basically, this is just for our all net, basically as well as our meetings and website administration for the software subscriptions. But basically, we'll continue doing the development work. We're about thirty-two percent completed, and we'll just keep on going through it. We're basically just doing it off the side, just chipping away at it as we go, but basically it is coming in, and we have seen improvements in the website as we've been going. Moving to rec-
I just had one question, Trevor. Nineteen nine six five, twenty thousand dollars tourism memberships. What would that all entail?
The tourism memberships, we actually budgeted for in, let me go back. I think we dropped it to zero because there was no actuals for it. So after a couple of years of no actuals, we just dropped it from the, from the budget, and that was one of our discussions we had during, yes?
I think you're looking at the pest and predator control. It's very close to the same color.
Oh, I am too.
Oh, okay.
Better put my glasses back on, I'm thinking. Sorry, that is exactly what you can't spot in there.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
It's a very, yeah, close shade, but my eyes aren't that good.
So which one was this? This was the, what dollar amount was on the pie chart, just?
Well, nineteen nine six five for that, as we can see, it's the pest and predator control budget.
So sliding.
Tourism was just a bit darker blue, it looks like now that I look closer, but there's nothing in there, so not to worry about.
Okay. I'll just get that color changed. I'll make it a bit brighter for the next draft that we do, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, these colors were just auto-generated by, we do the actual, and it just says, here's your colors, so. Okay?
Sorry about that.
Not our problem. So recreation and culture expenses. So at this stage, similar to last year, we've got arenas, Minnetonah Arena Grant, forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. We also have our regular five thousand dollar Bozeman Arena Grant. And then we had the delegation that came in during the month of December last year, kind of giving a list of all their high priority repair items, and council deliberated and basically provided some direction where we'd provide funding for the higher, higher need priority items, which came to roughly three thousand five hundred dollars. So the total budgeted Bozeman Arena Grant is eight thousand five hundred, comprised of our, our regular five thousand per year grant, plus the extra for the, the high priority repairs. Also, we have a ten thousand dollar expenditure on the Minnetonah Library. Council heard during a report from Public Works in two thousand twenty-four that somebody had broken in the door in the speed upstairs. We currently have it boarded up, so that's to cover the cost of replacing the steel door. Also, the white crown paint on the top of it has become quite aged and cracking, so what we're gonna do is basically sand it down, probably do a, what are that spray thing is, to get the actual debris off, and then basically?
Oh, sandblasting.
Sandblasting, thank you. And basically, once it's, once it's been clear off, it cleans, we're gonna put a new coat of exterior paint on that, just to brighten up the building. And so paint costs as well, as well as a lot of labor costs. And then council also, we're gonna be doing a change to our campground rates, twenty-five hundred dollar welcome stop campground signage, that includes a main sign as well as signs within the campground for twenty-five hundred dollars, just to add more, more promotional signage, as well as rates, charges, signage, and awareness. And then we also noticed that there had been historically declining operating cost in the Minnetonah, Minnetonah Town Hall operating expenses. This is excluding heat. And basically, we did do a small reduction in the operating budget for that, just to reflect the fact that actual costs have been going down.
What's the community center?
Community center, give me one second.
I wonder if that would have been maybe the town hall, just two types of wording?
That is a town hall, yeah.
The Bozeman daycare, is it the seventy-four or the ten-five? For blue color?
Blue color? So we've got the, Bozeman daycare is dark blue.
Which would be the, dark blue to me is forty thousand eight hundred.
Give me one second here, I'll go back.
If you, if you can identify any of them, they always go clockwise and down on the list, so you can kind of figure it out. So the Bozeman daycare is the seventy-four hundred one.
Yep. So on the, on the line graph, it, it actually says Bozeman daycare specifically, and the pie chart, it basically, because it's a little bit more cluttered, it just shows a pie piece of the dollar amounts. So right now, Bozeman daycare, we're looking at, let's see here.
Seventy-four?
Seventy-four, exactly, yeah.
So these, all these pie charts or whatever are gonna be available to the public, right?
When we do our first reading, basically, when we, it'll be the agenda item, a PDF copy, this will be actually on the website. And the reason why we don't have it now is because this is the first meeting where council, they're still reviewing, providing feedback and direction on this.
Sorry to interrupt, the reason why I'm asking, or whatever, how much work would it be to beside each one, say the community center, have that amount next to the word community center, and leave the pie chart, like have that extra amount on there, so people don't get confused, like I did? Just have that amount there, plus keep the pie chart too, and then, with the pie chart, you could see the?
Yep, we could actually rename these, like the community center, it's more like generic, but basically, I could be more specific with the building names.
I, I was saying that part, it's just to have that, where the community store is, have this number next to the community store itself, too. Instead of having to look at that, look at the color, and then go back to the chart and find that number. So if that number was right there, then, but keep your chart, because, or I mean, the, the pie chart itself, because when you look at it, then you see, okay, that's, that's at least half of that.
Okay.
Community center, you meant?
Yeah, he meant the store.
Store, yeah.
If everybody thinks that's, would make a difference or not, it's like, if we get confused, I'm sure other people will too, so.
As long as it's not a six-hour job.
Yeah, that's the other question, is it going to be?
It's, it shouldn't be too long, I just don't know if the Microsoft PowerPoint has that feature, but basically, we'll explore it, and if we can't do it, we'll get as close to it as we can, based on the, on the functionality that Microsoft PowerPoint adds. Because with these here, this legend is, is a, it's all populated from spreadsheet, so it's basically drawing spreadsheet line names, then numbers. So what I could do is just basically go in and actually put the dollar amount next to it. It just, it's gonna get a lot more, that, your legend aside, it's gonna get a lot more crowded, and like, it's gonna be, yeah, so I-
Could have it as a takeaway for next go around, or next year.
Yep.
Don't stress yourself on it.
Okay.
The ten thousand dollar library?
Yes.
Does that also include the sign? Because I don't, I haven't checked lately, but I know earlier on, the sign that said Minnetonah Library was a little beat up looking.
It could, so at this stage, it only includes that door repair, because it was totally smashed, and it's just got that big plank on and the roof, so it does not include the sign yet.
This is library building repair enhancement.
Yep.
So if that includes the painting and stuff, can we throw a new sign in there if it's?
Sure. How much do you think a sign would be? Okay, so.
It'll hold up the guy at sign here, and it'd be cheaper than getting proppant to paint a new one, guaranteed. And I know, I don't know, he used to warranty them for so many years against fading, chipping, cracking. I don't know if he still does, but he was.
Maybe we get something engraved, where it's like, actually like a, a medal, where basically you can just, it'd be more expensive, but it would definitely last.
Because, yeah, I'm pretty sure the one up there right now is pretty ugly looking, if I can recall.
No, it's, it's like the white part on top, it's all-
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure Danny painted that years ago.
I have no idea what the cost of the sign would be.
Okay, I'll just be inquiring. I'm thinking we'll just figure out what it is and put a ballpark estimate for that, but I think-
Probably a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
I know the, is it four by eight sheets, they get done at the arena? To put up on the wall, I think they're five or six hundred bucks to do those for the ring. If you want to do your advertising at the arena, that's what each artist is doing, one of those.
So we're thinking about a thousand dollars, but it'll be, we'll get whatever the estimate is and just drop it in?
Yeah, probably, because the sign would be longer than eight feet.
Yeah, but it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be-
Wouldn't be as, wouldn't have to be four.
Four feet high, but yeah.
Yeah. I would say a thousand, like Larry said, I'm pretty sure of that.
Do they go with this plywood, or do they use that corrugated plastic?
Plastic.
The plat, this stuff at the ring is plastic.
Plastic, no.
Because like he did the sign for the trailer park in Swan River, and he built all that up, and put it all together, and-
We have some at the middle, they're like buckboard or something, I don't know what they are exactly, but they're plastic, three-sixteenths, quarter-inch thick sheet, something like that.
Whenever there was a fire call, I-
Everybody got nervous.
Was usually notified, but.
So any other questions in the recreational area, or?
That was that sign on there, then?
Okay, I've got that note, too.
Those signs at the cemetery, but they're not gonna cost us anything, because money has been donated.
We have two people that have given money, I believe, so, yeah. Just have to get them done.
So that takes care of the general operating overview. So the next would be basically the Minnetonah's utility overview. So the next slide you basically see is the summary financial statement. And then similar to how we did with our general operating, we'll go through each of them in more detail. But at this stage, we are striving towards a zero-balance budget. However, we are going to have a rate rider to basically cover our fourteen prior years of deficits that we've had for utilities, as well as the fact that this year, we had our meter readers, we targeted to have them completed this year, and they were actually measuring consumption for a little while, but then they fell off the rails for one month, and we thought it might be for a second, but actually, that second month, they were, they were actually functioning again. So being that we were only able to charge revenues for that for a part of the year, we could not go and get a rate rider with a blank amount. We had to actually be very specific in what we were asking for, and because we, it was just getting lost revenue, lost revenue, until we finally were able to get the consumption going again. At this stage, we are going to take that rate rider that was gonna be going through last year and make it for this year, but unfortunately, it's one year later, so the rate rider is gonna be larger, just because you have one more year of, of lost revenue for, for five months. So at this stage, the rate rider is larger than it was the prior budget, but basically, with the rate rider there, it will bring us back up to a breakeven. And also, we have to reach out to the public utilities board, because their order that they issued back in two thousand twenty-two was to actually charge for various rates, because we were not able to charge for consumption, we were not in compliance with that order. So with our new rate rider in place, we'll have to go back and basically make a new proposal as far as how to become back to in the black. And basically, that will then be another order that they will approve, and will replace our current orders with the new orders, once we get the approval, and then carry forward the next number of years that they have those rate increases on. So the last order was basically our proposal, which they approved, and then they basically came back with the order. So everything that order was what they committed to council and the CEO at the time, but when the meters went down, we were pretty much basically not in compliance, and we couldn't get back to compliance until we were back, back up and running with those. So the good news is, our utility consumer readings are going fine, bill's been out for Bozeman today, Minnetonah builders are gonna go tomorrow, so we are consistent now in being able to charge for consumption for our water.
Trevor?
Yep.
The hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar rate rider, where will that get us to as far as being caught up in Minnetonah? Any idea like?
So?
In regards to the deficit?
Well, what this does right now is it covers us for this year.
This year, right?
And then we have our rates that were basically, like I mentioned how we made that proposal, and they said, charge these new rates. That new order is gonna come back to take care of the historical deficits, because-
This isn't the start of it yet, then. This is just to cover off to be clean this year.
Yeah, so we have the authority to get a rate rider for the current year, but to go back and collect a prior year, we can only do that with the approval.
That's still coming.
Yeah, so we have to go through that process first.
Okay, thanks. I thought that's the way it was, but I just wanted to be a hundred percent sure, thank you.
So Minnetonah's utility revenue, water sales are per what we already mentioned, the public utilities board order one one six slash two thousand, excuse me, two thousand twenty-three, actually, it was two thousand twenty-two, but we're utilizing two thousand twenty-three pricing. The rate rider that we've already talked about. We also have capital grants, which is part of our utility rejuvenation. So basically, for revenue, we are gonna be getting Manitoba Public Water Board Service grants, hundred twenty-five thousand, we're estimating for a backup power generator. That number may vary based the cost, we're still trying to finalize what that cost is, but we've got a commitment from them for fifty percent grant funding. And then we also have, we're estimating ten thousand dollars to complete our Minnetonah's water well construction, so five thousand dollars for our grant funding to pay for the last ten thousand that we need to spend on that project. Also, we have thirty-six hundred dollars for twenty-four rental hydrants. This is a throwback, way back, where basically the municipality rents fire hydrants for the utility. Basically, it's a way of providing more revenue to the actual utility for the benefit of balanced their budget. So then we have twenty-four in Minnetonah, that's the rate that we're actually, revenue that we're paying for those hydrants. In the Minnetonah's utility expense side, basically, there's ten thousand dollars for a modern repair contingency. This is the money that we set aside for repairs. We're sure what those repairs would be, but basically, we've set money aside for it. If you don't actually have to spend it, that can then be utilized for deficit reduction or for prior year deficit recovery. We also have thirty-eight hundred dollars for a water technician certification. We've already have technicians that are fully certified, but every year they have to renew, so basically, thirty-eight hundred dollars is for that renewal. Of course, it's that be attended on as well. And then we also have the two thousand twenty-four actual purification treatment. This is basically referring to the two percent inflation, so all the costs, we didn't go into in detail, we just said our budget assumption is two percent inflation rate, which we applied on our, on our budget amounts as well. And then we have for the hours of our staff that are basically utilizing the area of utility, the same rate increase that we did in the summer apply here, but to a lesser extent, because only two employees, one for Minnetonah, one for Bozeman, are actually, were expensing that, that payroll and benefit expense. And then the transfers, transfers to capital are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the backup generator, based on our most recent estimate, which is probably gonna change, and then ten thousand for the water well construction.
Trevor, being this is the utility budget, budget here, this two hundred and fifty thousand backup power generator, so how does that, is that a one-year hit to the users then? Or would that be spread over X amount of years, being it's a large? Or would that be spread over X amount of years, being it's a large number?
Well.
I'm not too familiar.
So this is basically money that goes towards the, the investment. So we have to raise the funds for it.
But it has to be collected by the utility.
Yeah, so we have to, we have to draw on the money this year to basically pay for that investment. But we only actually had to pay for fifty percent of it.
Right.
Because the, we'll get grant revenue, which will flow through our operating, then be transferred over to our utility for fifty percent. And then it's a hundred and twenty-five that we actually have to cover. So.
Yeah, that is borne by the utility users, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering, because even that a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's, that's, I know, I know we need this thing, but it's quite a large number.
It is. This is the.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how that's going to really affect billing. I know we got catch-up plus we're, we've, we gotta get balanced.
Yep.
We're gonna have catch-up down the road, plus we got a big expenditure for infrastructure here. So just kind of curious, I guess, how that's all gonna play out for the, the billing to the users.
Well, it does impact the billing just because you have to raise the funds to actually provide it. And we said that this year we weren't going to be, we were not going to be doing any borrowing and we weren't going to draw on our reserves. We wanted to build the reserves up, so that kind of restricts it where it has to come from utility revenues.
Exactly.
So at this stage, we do have a backup power generator. But the way it works right now is if we lose power, even if it's only for a minute or two, the water pressure goes down. And then once that water pressure goes down, we are required by legislation to do a boil water advisory, which means that people could be boiling, boiling, excuse me, boiling water for five, ten, seven days, however long until actually they get, the reading is, is safe. So we don't have to spend this money on this. It's currently the budget per council discussion already. But basically if we decide not to, we have a generator.
Right.
It's just that there's an inconvenience factor where basically if it is a short-term or a long-term disruption, the boil water advisors have to go in. But cost-wise, we are functioning without it and we have boil water advisors as well. So if this is something where we don't have the resource to pay for, we could defer this to a future year.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we don't need it. We should have something that's a little better than we do have, so it takes in automatically and all that. But I'm just thinking this plus water going out, plus I don't even know how many years of catch-up, which will be next year now.
Fourteen, fifteen now.
No, yeah, not twenty-five, not like twenty twenty-five, but twenty-six starting for sure. And people were used to relatively cheap water in the town, like holy moly, that's, yeah. I'm just wondering, yeah, the impact of that. It's really, when I'm looking at this now, I'm putting three pieces together, it says wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a thought that I, I'm thinking of now.
You want to start for a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
No, I just, well, we can. I just was really thinking if I was a consumer of water now, like with all this coming, yeah, it's gonna be pretty big, I guess, is what I'm saying.
What roughly increase in the water bill would that affect? Just the estimate you're thinking?
I, I really have no idea, like, you know?
I can take it as a takeaway to come back. I can just, we'll basically, we'll get a dollar amount, but if it's based on consumption, that would be more hard to calculate.
Yeah.
But we're, it would be, it's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five. So yeah, we get fifty percent sale because the water services board pays half, which makes it easier. But it's still a hundred and twenty-five that we have to, have to raise.
Just a thought that was going through my head seeing these numbers. So whatever the rest of the council body thinks, we put a start inside and come back to it.
I got a new guy question. At what point in the budget do we see our proposals? What sort of numbers it's going to do in terms of utility rates and tax increases? I'm assuming that's going to be before we approve the budget. We will know what changes are.
The tax rates, there's actually slides that are coming up that will basically illustrate that and the approach we utilize. For the utility rate, it's a little bit more difficult because it's based on consum, like you've got your, your regular monthly portion of your, of your charge. So we can, we have that. But we also have consumption base, so it's, it depends on how much water is consuming. So I can give a dollar amount, which is going to be basically one twenty-five. And we can say X number of counts, on average, it would be, if everybody used the exact same, which they don't, or if we just simply took off the heavy users and like the school, the housing, natural housing buildings, we can get a ballpark-ish. But it's, it's going to be less, but we won't stand by the number. It'll just be a ballpark.
Okay.
Okay.
And will we be doing like taking maybe eight or ten roll numbers again and comparing the taxes of those particular rolls from last year to this year?
Uh, for this one, I have.
Not for tonight, I mean, but if.
We will.
Forward, once we maybe have some changes yet or potential things changing yet.
So for the new people, the tradition is that council voluntarily donates their properties for kitty pigging as far as bill rate calculation. So what we'll do is we won't have any names on it, but basically I'll say these are the properties here. We'll throw some other non-council member properties in there as well, just to shuffle it up. But basically what we do is we utilize those ones to say, if you've got a residential property roughly this value, your tax would go up by this amount. If you've got an agricultural property roughly this value. So the idea is we try to cluster up a little bit agriculturals, commercials, residentials, and then different, different communities as well. And yeah, we typically, that will include some, some council properties too, just because that's been, what they've been doing in the previous years and council seems to be okay with it. So. Yeah, so the answer is yes, but not on this version.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you.
So moving to the Bozeman utility overview, that's slide number twenty-five. Basically, again, we're striving for a zero dollar breakeven budget. Again, this year we are going to have a rate rider for the two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. And again, we also have the deficit, which we now know of for the two thousand twenty-two fiscal year, which is drawn from our financial statements. And for deficit recovery, they always go on financial statements. It's never an estimate. You have to actually, once you're finished your financial year, you got your audit done. If your financial statements show a deficit, you have to report by a letter, which is coming to probably the next council meeting. It's going to be a letter that we have to write to the Manitoba government saying we are a deficit in these areas. And basically probably this is why, and basically we're requesting authority to basically go for recovery. And the Ministry of Municipal Relations is going to be providing a template for the letter as well as the process we're following. But right now, this is on, I believe, page eight or ten, showing basically what the actual shortfalls were for two thousand twenty-two and that fact that we actually have to cover these. So it's not a per se expense, but it's something that we have to cover, so I can't assign it to a department. It just basically overall, it's got a deficit of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars we have to actually cover. For this utility, it's detailed in, we blended it with the administration. So basically it's thirty-one thousand, but basically it's roughly twenty-six thousand dollars for that. And then there was about four thousand dollars administrative costs on that line item. So moving to more detailed look, because that was, that was the overview, Bozeman utility revenue. Basically, water sales, we forecasted based on the public works utility order one one five slash two zero two three. And then we have the rate rider, which we have at forty-eight thousand, at forty-two dollars consumption based, offset by a prior year loss. Actually, that number might not be correct. I just spotted it. Okay, the overview is correct. The rate rider forty-eight thousand is too low, so disclaimer on that one. We'll get that updated. And then we also have a grant revenue coming in, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred for primary, primary water line replacement. And what this is, is we have ceramic clay pipe between our treatment plant and Bozeman and our main distribution system, which has been crumbling. And basically we had to do some major repairs on it already. And basically we've got it, we're estimating a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to replace that. It's about four hundred feet, I believe, and we estimated it a hundred and fifteen thousand. Manitoba Water Utility Board has already committed to fifty percent funding by a commitment letter. And then we also have the Lagoon feasibility study. This is basically the part two, where basically we are doing the study to look at repair or decommission. And if you decommission, alternative locations. So we have basically sixty-six thousand and change. Basically, we set aside for this, which is the shared funding that we've got with Manitoba Water Services Board. And that's why we've got the J R Cousins doing that work. And just an update, the technician was on the lagoon a couple of days ago drilling down for their samples, their drill samples. So that's been completed. So it's going, it's just going slow. And then finally, eleven fire hydrants that we're renting from the utility in Bozeman for a total of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. Moving to Bozeman utility expenses, similar to Minnetonka's, we set aside ten thousand dollars for modern repairs. We have three thousand eight hundred dollars per technician certification renewal, two percent inflation on two thousand twenty-four actuals to date. Market-based wage increases, which we've already talked about, and transfers to capital, a hundred and fifteen thousand for the water line replacement, which we talked about. And that's sixty-six thousand five thirty-three for the Lagoon feasibility study completion phase two. Now, slide thirty talks about our two thousand twenty-five capital budget. There is a small disclaimer here regarding the Stover Pioneer Bridge replacements, as well as the Heart Roaring River. I've currently done a call up to M N P to find out, to inquire with them, actually I acquired with Municipal Relations first to acquire, is this an operating expense or a capital expense? It's over five thousand, so I would, I put it into capital. But Municipal Relations says, check with your auditors, see what their previous practice was, and I'm waiting for an answer back. If they say that it's an operating expense, then basically this will move from a capital budget into our actual operating budget and basically be reflected in the transportation department graphs and charts. So aside from that, it's a fair bit of detail here, so just maybe the highlights. Well, we talked about most of the utilities and then we've got the, well, here's one that's new. The security systems for our municipality facilities, like our, our shops, town hall. During two thousand twenty-four, we had break-in at this town hall where basically they broke in and they stole the seniors' snack supplies, as well as all of our cleaning supplies. And we also had in prior years, an attempted break-in at one of our shops. And then some other buildings and properties also had break-ins. So this is basically, we set aside forty thousand dollars to basically upgrade our security systems for our buildings. Upgrade to be determined, but we just, it's an allocation of forty thousand for things like door sensors, cameras, motion detectors, anything to basically, probably a lot of signs too, like monitor secured, video monitoring, just as a deterrent, just to protect some of our buildings. The concern here is if someone were to break into a shop, an alarm would go off. But basically if the tools are taken, then that's going to impact our operations. So it's just a little bit more to prevent that from happening. So we set aside forty thousand, but council, at its discretion, this is just a proposal. So whether it's here or not, that'll be a council decision. And then we have some other small items like a one-way plow, a plumber's scope camera, fifteen thousand dollars each. And those are just detailed there for council, so we can add to it, take away from it at council's discretion prior to our first reading.
The one-way plow, was that for the grader or was that for the tractor and?
I was just gonna ask the same question.
Because for the, one way for the grader, like thirty some thousand.
Yes.
But this is only fifteen.
I'm not sure what this plow is for. Does anybody remember?
I remember we had this question last time.
Yeah, I remember it too. We, I should be remembering now.
But I don't think we got an answer. We were gonna ask Colin.
Okay, well, it's a start beside that one. Because like Larry said, a capital eye plow for the grader is like forty thousand, just above.
And then we have on slide thirty-one, our two thousand twenty-six to two thousand and thirty capital plan. So the municipal. So those years actually, please increment them by one. That was a carry forward from the last budget PowerPoint. So basically it's twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, not twenty-five, three to twenty-nine, but the numbers are corrected, just the titles were changed. So for our capital plan, we are currently planning for two thousand twenty-six to engage in borrowing. And we are also planning to have some significant capital investments, predominantly the new lagoon construction, if it's required, as well as decommissioning. It's going to be a big ticket item. So for twenty-six and twenty-seven, we were planning for two and a quarter million and one million dollar in each of those years respectively, as well as a new grader purchase, which we've got an estimate for seven hundred thousand dollars. And then basically part two of our security system upgrade for our facilities, forty thousand. And then in twenty-six, it would just be the, the lagoon completion. And then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, there'd be additional projects there in, we basically ranked them high priority down to low priority. So their rankings and their housing to come up in the five-year capital investment plan is based on their priority. And basically we set some money aside for those. And then in the comments below those items, there's some more information regarding what it is, as well as potential funding sources.
So if someone asked a question on if we're going to purchase a new grader in twenty-six, how much are we putting away in twenty-five to the reserve for?
Uh, probably not that much, which is why we're going to be borrowing. So on the borrowing column, the full seven hundred thousand is basically what we're borrowing. So basically we'll be going for a diventure. So in, we have to do diventures by project or by purchase. So we've got one and a quarter, one and a quarter billion dollars of borrowing for our Bozeman construction of our lagoon. And we have another diventure, it could be just one diventure, but these are applications for, so they could merge the funding into one financial instrument if they so choose. We basically would be applying in two thousand twenty-six for a seven hundred thousand dollar diventure to purchase a grader.
So when we do a diventure now, is it going to be a single levy deal?
Nope, the venture will be for a number of years. So we've already got diventures right now that we've, we just paid one off just this, just last year. And we have one remaining. So basically a diventure is X number of years, probably five. We take that and basically spread over a five-year period. So.
I think, maybe I said that wrong. My question was more on, how are you going to spread that diventure out from the town to the rural?
Oh, so as far as funding it. So this part is the five-year, future five-year plan. So if we decided in two thousand twenty-six to actually get the actual grader, we would discuss that during the budget period at that time, as far as how do we actually want to fund it. But right now we have it just as a, as a diventure, but we have a special levy for it. Well, we would have to have a special levy for it, basically. So how that would be, mechanics who would pay what? That would be a two thousand twenty-six budget discussion.
The grader, the facilities and the lagoon, that column should actually be twenty-six, I think?
Yeah, so the, so with the PowerPoint, if you're looking, why it's so familiar, it's the same thing we did last year, just with some updates. So the data's been updated, but the format is the same.
Okay, I get you.
So last year we did all those departments, pie graphs, the same as last year, the bar charts are all the same as the last year. And these capital tables are all the same as last year. But on this one here, I just didn't update the, like last year was twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, but it should have been two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. So that's what I was referring to when we first got to the slide. So don't let the years throw you off. It's just basically, they should be, all those years should be incremented by one.
I think that, just not even on topic here, but I think the seven hundred thousand is fairly high because we will have a trade against it, which isn't going to be worth a terrible lot, but.
At one point too, we're thinking of maybe keeping one of our old ones for us there.
Spare too, yeah.
Seeing as we threw in so much money into it.
Yeah.
So the, the discussion was in a pinch, basically if one of them goes down, we've got that seventy thousand. Then someone can jump in there or if there's a real emergency call, it can jump into a grader and operate that as well. So there was, we, current discussions, although it can change, is that we would not be selling it. We'd just be retaining it.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, questions so far on that? Now, the next PowerPoint is basically number thirty-two, a slide that talks about the mill rates. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this is the first year where we have to legally change from community-based levies down to one at-large levy, which is required as a requirement of our amalgamation. They gave us X number of years to do it, and two thousand twenty-four was the last year that we could go with the separate levies. So what we are proposing and per council discussion, basically we have recommended an at-large levy. And what that would basically do is the Bozeman Minnetonka's levy, which was six point four eight one in two thousand twenty-four, would be dropped to zero and no longer exist. The Minnetonka's levy, which was two point nine two, would drop to zero and no longer exist. The rural levy, which was six point zero seven, would drop to zero and no longer exist. And then we have a new at-large levy, which would be basically fifteen, four, seven, seven, nine. Actually, one second here. Actually, disclaimer on that one. Actually, that levy number on that slide is not correct. Let me take that as a takeaway and I'll have to update that. It's showing the same as in two thousand twenty-four. I'm not sure why.
You're adding the six, two and the six. Should actually add up to the, to the green number, right?
Yeah.
You add up the red, the green.
It should be twenty, twenty point five four, yep. So it should be twenty point five four two seven, is what that levy should be. We're off by, that number's off by one, one column. So we, the levies, individual levies, basically no longer exist, except for the Minnetonahs diventure. And the at large levy would be twenty point five four two seven. And it's just showing as the green item, and we'll correct that in that slide, it's just in the wrong column. Now, on the last slide, which is slide number thirty three, we looked at a few different ways of applying the mill rate. And the mill rate, basically, we looked at the two thousand twenty four budget levy approach, which is basically for comparison purposes. And then we looked at a transportation special levy, basically saying, let's go to an at large, as well as just a, a transportation levy on the side. And then just a common at large levy. And basically, what we're recommending right now is that we go as a straight at large levy. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, Ministry of Municipalities is actually recommending, would prefer that we have one at large levy. And basically, we're administratively, it's easier for us to work with. Also, the changes.
Okay, can I correct you on one thing?
Sure.
They're not recommending, they're telling us to.
Yeah, oh, we have to go at large, but we have the option of, yeah, that's, that's correct. So legally, we're required to go at large. But a lot of, some municipalities or a municipality has a right to also put a lot of special levies on. So potentially, what we could do is we could go at large and then put a bunch of special levies to replicate what we're doing currently with our Bozeman Minnetonahs at large levies. But basically, administratively, it'd be a lot more work, a lot more confusing with the tax statement. But we could engineer it to go back the way it is and still have the legally required at large levy. But what we're recommending is that we go at large as a standard levy. And basically, relative to our two thousand twenty four budget levies, the Bozeman residents, we'd be paying, their, their change would be two point eight one percent increase to a two point eight eight percent. That's their contribution towards funding. Minnetonahs contribution to funding would go from six point oh seven percent to six point nine nine percent. So both those changes are relatively minimal. And at large, it would be nine one, ninety one point one two percent to ninety point one four percent. Just going down a little bit because the Minnetonahs and the Bozeman ones have got, have increased as far as the at large.
Do you, you don't have a line for rural though? What, how rural is going to change from what it was to what it's going to be now? Have you?
This.
You also have Minnetonahs spelled wrong.
Oh, thank you. I do.
I thought that did Larry Lang type this the first time, because he always spells it with two.
Yeah, actually, it's his, his table. So I just, I took the yellow out, but I just, everything else is the same. Yep. So let me just check his PowerPoint. Actually, on his PowerPoint, actually, the bottom one is the rural. So rural, so instead of being at large, it should be rural. The rural change is actually ninety one point one two percent, and it would go down to ninety point one four percent. So small change there as well, but it's going down because of the fact that the Bozeman Minnetonahs levies are increasing. So relatively speaking, the percentage of contribution towards municipal revenues that are coming from the various Bozeman Minnetonahs and rural areas is basically, there's not much change. Whereas if you go to transportation levy services, because the cost of the transportation in the big picture is relatively a small percentage, there'd be a small, it'd be more work and there wouldn't be much more of a change in regards to that work, as far as who's paying more, who's paying less from a percentage point of view.
I was expecting a great big rural jump at large. Or am I reading it wrong?
Nope, they would actually go down because you're, there's, they go down a little bit, because you've got the, the at large for Bozeman, which goes up, as well as the Minnetonahs goes up. So it is shifting a little bit away from the rural, but it's not shifting a lot. So from ninety one point one two percent, they go down to ninety one point, sorry, ninety point one four percent. So I did bring my phone, so I can, if we're talking basically about a percentage point, like point nine eight or point one, one point zero two percent.
So where is the rest picked up from? Like, if I'm reading it right, we're gonna be collecting one point, one point two million dollars more this year than last year.
Yeah.
So where are we picking that up if?
It's all in the percentages, just broke out that way. But yeah, last year we collected.
Two point seven.
Three, or three point two.
I'm sorry, three point two.
Yeah, and this year, we're proposing four point six, correct?
So that's one point six increase.
So this is a same dollars, different approach as far as collection. So it's taking the, the budget that we have, and we're basically, how much we're collecting doesn't change. It's basically how we collected the percentages, as far as how much you're contributing to twenty two thousand twenty four budget approach versus the actual at large approach. So what you're collecting doesn't change, it's just basically who pays what and what percentages. So on slide thirty three, on the left hand column, it says here, using the two thousand twenty four budget levies approach, that's what the percentage contributions are. And then at the at large approach, that's how they change, that's the new ones. So the difference between the two is basically, who's, who's contributing as a percentage base, as well as a dollar base, more versus less.
So if everything goes good for two thousand and twenty five, and we stay to our numbers, and there's no, no huge unforeseeable expenses or whatnot, and everything goes good, does that mean that we won't be into our overdraft?
Oh, we'll still go into our overdraft.
We're still gonna need it.
Yeah. So the way the, and this is just, it was in a previous council discussion. We have an overdraft protection, as well as our bank account balance. And when we get our tax revenues coming in, they usually come in pretty much within one month, or actually, it's a matter within just a couple of weeks, because people wait till the very last day. Time value money, keep your money working for you up until as close as you can to the date, and then you pay it. And we have lines of people coming in, and then there's some stragglers after and a few other bill curve that pay in advance. So our account balances spike, and we're out of our line of credits, we have actually a balance. But we've historically, and this has been year after year after year, we've been going into our line of credit. And the concern is, we've been going into it earlier each and every fiscal year, a little bit earlier each year. And we'd be going a little bit deeper into it each year as well. So at this stage, that is the, that is the cash flow. Basically, what we're doing is, the trend has been, we've been going earlier into our line of credit, deeper into our line of credit. So these levies will not change that. We're still gonna go into our line of credit. But hopefully, for example, some expenses that we said were potential expenses, and they don't occur, we could have that money go towards our reserves, or go, which would be basically also, if it's in the reserves, it's also still the bank account. We wouldn't be going into it quite as, as early, and we wouldn't go into it quite as deep. So let's say, for example, FIP applications, we didn't have to basically get legal on a FIP application. That's twenty thousand dollars, that would be, we set it aside, we set a mill rate to actually generate that twenty thousand dollars. The money is flowed into our account. If we go through a whole year without having to consult legal for that, that twenty thousand is still in our account, which means that we'd be going into our line of credit a little bit later, and potentially a little bit less, everything else being equal.
On the big sheets, it's four point six million, should that maybe be four point three trillion? Is that, is there something?
That's where the.
Just crossing over here.
Yeah. So on Larry Lang's model, the HMC model, the numbers had changed when they went from the three levies down to the one mill rate levy. And my question to him was basically, can you confirm that, is this number based on accurate? Like, have we been adjusting some of our stuff? Or is it basically on, is there in that allocation, something miscalculating? So at this stage, the numbers are straight from the model, per the, the documents. So what we've gone on the PowerPoint reflects that. But it was, I noticed the number went down as well, and I thought, maybe we have curtailed, because we have.
We did some changes.
We did some changes. For example, on that backup power generator, we originally had three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But the feedback from council, as well as from that to a water board, was that, that's probably too high.
Right.
And then discussion with them, he said, well, knock it, knock it down by fifty to seventy five, seventy five thousand dollars. And I actually went down to a hundred thousand dollars, just because four hundred thousand was the original one, and then we went to three fifty, and now we've gone down to two seventy five. I don't think it's gonna cost that much.
Right.
And the discussion that we had previously with council was that, various backup power discussions, generator, how much it would cost estimates. The two, two seventy five, three hundred also seemed high, so I dropped it down to two fifty. So there's a hundred thousand.
So that's gonna make an impact there, yes.
Exactly.
So I'm just going to this here sheet that Larry Lang had sent out for the special service levies now. So we had none of that implemented in any of this so far. We just had different categories that we could use special service levies, is that correct?
Yeah, so right now, what he, what we did originally was the two thousand twenty four approach. And then on that model, he gave us a comparison saying, if we did the same thing again, which we can't, but just for baseline. And then the other one was basically one at large, which is what the ministry wants us to do.
Right.
And then a at large with a special levy on top of it. And the transportation special levy is there, and it, the purpose of it is to basically reflect a point that there really isn't, it changes, but is it a change that we want to do? So it's kind of saying, hey, if you did a transportation levy, this is what it would look like. And the reason why we went for transportation is that, of all the potential levies, it's the biggest dollar one that we have. We could do things like a fire department special levy, or we could do things like a diventure or not diventure. We could do a garbage truck and garbage pickup and recycling levy. Those dollar bounds are lower. The biggest of all the options for a special levy was transportation, which is why he put it on for his example.
And the transportation, that included the snow removal dust control?
Yes.
Uh, highway, I guess, construction and maintenance?
All the ditch, the grader, the culvert clearing, the ditch mowing and, and cutting down that they do, the de-icing, snow plowing, salting, repairing, dust control, partly offset by our dust control revenues. And basically, it was the biggest category, single category that we could base levy on.
And those numbers would have come to the tune of, if I'm reading this right, just about six hundred thousand? Or is that?
So the, the table just says, basically, if you did levy for that.
Yeah.
That's roughly how much.
Oh, I guess, I'm looking at the same thing here.
Yeah.
The two hundred and six thousand and the three hundred and seventy seven thousand?
So it just shows the split between Bozeman and Minnetonahs and rural.
Right.
If you had a transportation levy as well. Like, if you just went at large with a transportation levy, that's how it would break down.
Yeah, I just have this recycling on my mind here, and I'm not sure how that would play out into it.
Recycling would be a different levy, that's a.
Yeah, that would be a, yes, that's right. Okay. So this, this one that he proposed in transportation, I think is all these accounts I have wrote down here, like road maintenance, Bozeman, Minnetonahs, Bozeman dust control sidewalks and boulevards, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Like dust control here, or sorry, recycling, account number five forty dash one hundred dash one fifty, it's a hundred and seven thousand. So is that the blue box pickup in, in the two towns and stuff like that, Trevor?
Uh, what GL is that?
Five forty dash one hundred dash one fifty.
One second here. Forty, one hundred?
Yeah.
One fifty?
Yeah.
When Kuscher takes a trailer into, do we receive a revenue? Or is it all expense?
I don't think we see revenue, nothing's about here, I think. Like the TVs and all that electrical.
Yeah.
I think the only thing we receive revenue for is the tires, when they go across the scrap.
Did we mention that at the meeting or whatever? That could be one of the things that we could talk today and I'm about, when they come to meet us, is OSS? Or did we have it on there? Not specifically OSS, I can just say, and recycling end of it, as compared to other problems.
Yeah, maybe it's our third thing, Larry, yeah.
Was it our third thing?
So for recycling, five four zero one hundred one fifty, there's a lot of OSS park cloud waste Minnetonahs, which would be our recycling.
Yeah.
And then, let me just go to the top here. Yeah, I got, yeah, that's all of it. That's what all of that is. It's all that GL five four zero one hundred one fifty, EH recycling, is all OSS park cloud waste.
Okay. And that was a hundred and seven thousand, whatever.
For the, for the budget.
Or last year's number, I think.
I've got here, I'll let you know what we budgeted for. The, I've got a trial balance that's running from January first to October thirty first. And we had eighty two thousand three hundred seventeen dollars. But if you prorate it, it's gonna be higher. So if I go to that budget line item. So January first to October fifteenth accruals, basically, we applied a two percent inflation. We rounded up to the year's hundreds, so we had a hundred and seven thousand dollars for the budget.
Okay, that's a lot of future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some money to haul junk away. It's not really junk, somebody's making money out of it.
Yeah, stuff we like getting rid of, but it's money for somebody else, yes. Okay, and then I guess, yeah, we have all the other costs of actually, like the garbage end of stuff too, that we would have to figure in, like for Gary and Doug at the other end, for the course of the year. And I kind of just, I figure five hours a day in each community on every Monday. And that come out to about thirty thousand, just sorry, I kind of just give an average there. And of course, you've got your, your trucks and stuff that are getting used to, so. I don't know if it would be a couple hundred thousand at the end of the day, or what it would be, but. It's just one thing that's been on my mind here, because I just know that, I think the rural people, when they see that the garbage and the recycling is gonna be on dirt tax, it's not too far to get, yeah.
So you'd have your, your fuel, you'd have your labor time, you'd have your maintenance of your vehicles, repairs that come up.
Right. Yeah, garbage, kind of to me anyways, is almost like turning on a top in town and getting water. You just turn the top on, get your water, you pull your garbage to the curb, it gets picked up in the country. We have to bring it in and get rid of it that way, so. I kind of think of it as a real, you know, convenience or whatever word you want to use, you know? So I just wanted to bring that up, I don't know how everybody else feels, but it's a thought that I, it hasn't been on my mind anyways.
Okay.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Yeah. Another possibility is, because OSS is probably, they're doing the work and they're charging us, but there's a profit margin in there. We could just get our own truck, that could actually do that kind of hauling from point wherever they collect it. Like, we, we could take dirt landfill, load up a truck, and then haul it to wherever some recycler would be. Like, they sell it to somebody, so we could just sell it ourselves, cut out the middleman.
Smart thing to figure out, because the rural still hauls recycling there. And then the truck comes there and picks it up from the dump, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
How do you?
Yeah, I, I kind of took that into account. I dropped the hundred and seven thousand to eighty five thousand six hundred, because that's five dumpsters that they kept to one spot and pick up versus every little speed in town, they go around with their mechanized arm, you know? How do you really get it accurate, but you kind of gotta break it out somehow, so.
What is the cost of the blue bins? What is the cost of the blue bins in front of everybody's?
Uh, I think that's part of the, the blue bins is probably part of the service, isn't it?
I believe so.
So there's no charge to the ratepayer for that?
Uh, the rate, um, I don't believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I don't believe there is. I believe you basically get your bins and you pay for your service.
Yeah.
But I do know in some communities they do charge, but basically, we want to encourage people to recycle, so.
No, I don't. Uh, as far as a special levy or what?
Yeah, like through, through the town, the people that live in Swan, do they pay surcharge for?
I could get a tax, it was probably pretty easy to take a look and see what their special levies are. So it might give us a bit of an idea as to what they're, you know, and then go from there. I'm sure, I'm sure it's in there because, uh, a lot of times even when they do a section of street for rejuvenation, there's a special levy on for that.
So what I could do is, um, what are the contracts we're doing for special levies was have HMC incorporate in the model, like they basically built into the model a special levy functionality. We could ask them to do a special levy for garbage, and they come back with a number on that. Would you be okay with that? Like we've already, they've already been contracted for the work, so just give a little bit more to do.
There, yeah, like that wouldn't be a big thing for them to do, I don't imagine, time-wise, because they have all the information.
Yeah. And then on PowerPoint slide where we have our levy comparisons, we could put a garbage levy in there as well, just to have that as an extra.
I wouldn't mind really seeing that because it's kind of a, I think it's going to be a topic.
So didn't we now get a kickback from the government for recycling or was it percentage?
What's that?
That's mostly for oil.
For recycling, at one time they used to have that, right?
I don't know, Derek. Yeah. Yeah. I think the only thing we get, uh, any kind of money coming back was from, uh, the tires when they quote. And of course the scrap, the scrap dealer pays us for that. But the tires, I think there's, uh, maybe it's MM, SM, or something like that, multi-materials, something or other.
I can't recall, but the company that we're with, they're, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
They'll come in and, we ask them to come in, they'll, if they have a truck en route that's got room, they'll do it. If they, if they don't, we just give them a call and say, hey, it's getting a big pile. They'll come like within two days.
Yeah, and then we get a bit of money back. It's not a huge thing, but it is something, and we do got to get rid of the tires too, so.
Yeah, they're a fire hazard, so.
They are, yes.
Where do they haul recycling to?
Saskatchewan.
Saskatchewan?
Yeah.
It goes to Yorkton, doesn't it?
I'm not really sure, but it is.
It's east of Yorkton, I believe. So I think it goes into Saskatchewan, so actually our Manitoba, uh, lawns and camps are crossing borders, yeah. Which doesn't make a lot of sense, you know, Manitoba should be set up to accommodate that stuff, you know, but we aren't, so. But yeah, maybe we should get, or HMC to do a rundown on that.
One thing we could look at as well is, uh, recycling. I mean, just because the province doesn't do it, doesn't mean we can't. And if we're, or we have recyclers taking us up to Yorkton, it's like one more big bail or whatever, whatever they, they call it. A bit more revenue.
You mean compacting everything?
Um, well, I, I'm not sure, like, uh, in, back in the day in B.C., they had it where private companies would give you a refund, but it'd only be six cents per can, even though at that time it was ten. But basically, taking it to recycler, if there wasn't a town, it was, they just throw the garbage because it's a convenience thing. So they say, here, we'll give you six cents, and then they pocket the ten, and they make the money on whatever the recycling sale is too, so. So it's, uh, potential for just something to look at down the road.
I don't know. Roughly, it's costing us about a thousand bucks a trip from here to Yorkton.
Yeah, it would be, wouldn't it? Yeah, that would be, right. I guess, when will be our next go-around with this, Trevor? Do we have any idea? Like if HMC is going to get that information together?
Let me go to my schedule. Give me one second.
And I'm just wondering when we'll have our next opportunity to see the next level of it, I guess, or whatever.
Well, Trevor's looking at that. Can you help me to understand these mill rates? Am I looking at this rate that people's taxes are going to more than double if we... And if you happen to live in Minnetonka, they're going to go up five times?
Okay, Minnetonka's here.
You're comparing the six points, six point zero seven to six point nine nine? Is that the comparison you're using?
Well, I was using the twenty point five four for the at-large. And then, so if you live in rural, you're currently paying just over six. If you're in Bozeman, you're six and a half. But if you're in Minnetonka, you're only paying three. Second last page, well, third is going to stick here.
Would the Bozeman do the trucking of their stuff while I'm down?
No, I'm just talking the overall.
Taxes.
Overall. I'm just trying to understand how much the taxes are going up if we approve the budget as is.
Okay. Because, yeah, Minnetonka's will be going up from two point nine two to twenty point five four, or no, fifteen point four seven, right?
No, twenty point five four.
Yes, twenty point five four. I guess that's when I'd like to take a, uh, tax rule and just actually work it out and see what it does with that mill rate put in.
Well, I just used this little formula at the bottom, and I thought, so if you had a two hundred thousand miller property, divided by a thousand is two hundred times your mill rate increase. So if you were at, uh, say, six and a half, twenty and a half.
That's fourteen.
Like these numbers are staggering.
Yeah.
So let's just do it exact, twenty point five four two seven minus six point four eight one is fourteen point zero six one seven. Times two hundred, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar property, your taxes are going to go up by twenty-eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-four cents.
That's, yeah, that's, that can't happen.
No.
No.
But is that what this is saying?
I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure because it's such a big variance this year.
Yeah. Like we can't have people's taxes going up that much, or we're going to get lynched.
Yeah.
And I'm going to help.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because that's when it's kind of nice just to have the roll number and plug in the mill rate. And then we can see, okay, this is what it would calculate out to now. Because usually it's like a mill or something, it's always varied, like it's, or, you know, a mill and a bit. Because a mill on the old RM used to generate about ninety thousand dollars, I think, like one mill.
For everybody?
Uh, for the rural section, rural area, yeah. I think that's what it was, wasn't it, Larry? One mill was around ninety some thousand? Yeah.
And just going back to the towns or whatever. If we go back to the, to the twenty-four, we can't use twenty-three because that's when it took a big jump, or a big dive, right? Because of that hundred and twenty-five thousand thing. And the next following year, the twenty-four.
Was an increase.
Was the increase, it were assured a bit, or back to? See, the twenty-four doesn't have the, uh, the PUV on it, does it?
The what's on there?
The PUV, the utilities. Did we start in twenty-four?
Yeah.
We did?
It's going to, yeah, twenty-four went over and above, uh, if it would have went consistently up, like it went down, then it went up, but it went substantially more than it would have drove up, you know, on a, on a traditional trajectory. Are you doing some examples, Trevor?
Yeah, well, I went back in the model, and the two thousand twenty-five should be twenty point five four three for the at-large. So that's the number that's there. And that basically, so Bozeman, Minnetonka, Rural, well, both, those mill rates levies will basically, will no longer be in existence.
Yeah.
And then we'll have an at-large that was fifteen point four seven seven nine, going up to twenty point five four three, as is currently stated in our budget model, which represents a five point zero six five increase on the at-large. But basically, Bozeman is going down by six point four eight and change, Minnetonka's down by two point nine two, Rural down by six point zero seven, but the at-large is going to be going up by five point zero six five.
So if you live in Bozeman,
Yep.
are your taxes going up by, uh, basically fourteen mill rate points?
If you live in Bozeman, uh, you are paying a Bozeman as well as an at-large of fifteen?
Oh, so you are paying both of those?
Yeah. Yeah, so you're paying your Bozeman one.
So that is not so bad then. Oh, good.
I started, I heard you talking, I was like, math, I was, I was getting nervous, but no, the math is there, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So you, everybody pays the at-large, and then they pay the Bozeman if you're Bozeman, or Minnetonka if you're Bozeman, or Rural if you're Rural. So it's, you're paying two, plus the adventure one, plus the education one.
So then, if, am I understanding this correctly now, if you lived in Bozeman, under this new proposal, your taxes would actually go down slightly?
At this stage, um, six point four eight.
Because you were paying almost twenty-two. Your mill rate was almost twenty-two, now it's going to be twenty point five four.
Yeah, twenty-one, just about twenty-two.
Just about twenty-two. They would go down to twenty. Yeah, they would go down. So Bozeman, it would be beneficial for Bozeman.
Now you're helping me breathe easier.
Yeah, there you go. Actually, I'll, I'll print this slide. Let's see here.
But our revenue dollars collected are getting so much higher this year the way it looks, aren't they?
So somebody's paying extra.
Yes, it's got to come from, yeah.
From the rural.
The rural.
It's going to come from the rural, and it's going to come from the guys that own eight hundred thousand dollar quarters.
Yep.
As compared to the...
Well, so did Rural pay Rural and at-large?
Paid.
To Rural?
Did everybody pay their Bozeman, Minnetonka, Rural plus at-large?
Yep, the Rurals paid their at-large as well as Rural.
So people are getting hit, or Minnetonka is who's getting nailed.
So how come we can't even that out more? The Bozeman pays what they did, and we all paid what we did, but still have it at the same end number? It doesn't make sense that we're going down in certain areas and out in others.
I'm going to figure this out now that I understand it, for Minnetonka, so the difference would be.
This is going to take a bit, because it's so slow in the printer. So we just, see if we can make it.
So do we not add this, and this, and this?
We have to plus that, yeah.
It's not, because I've got twenty, twenty point zero five six nine for Minnetonka.
Yeah. Yeah, so Minnetonka's is going to just go up the tiniest bit.
Yeah.
And everybody else is going down. Well, who all pays the Minnetonka adventure? Is that just Minnetonka's town, or is that Minnetonka's rural people as well?
No, it's in town.
Then everybody's taxes are going down, except for this town of Minnetonka, and it'll be very, very slight.
Do you remember how long that adventure was for? We were talking about the lagoon, right?
Phase two of the lagoon.
Yeah.
Wasn't it ten years, though?
It was a ten-year deal?
I think so.
And so we'll be in halfway through?
About that. I could take that as a takeaway.
So I got, if you have a two hundred thousand dollar home in Minnetonka, your taxes will go up by ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents. I don't know if that's average, but...
Yeah, well, there'd be some lower and some a little higher, right? Yeah.
That's, that's much more doable than forty-five hundred bucks.
I knew that forty-five hundred wasn't right.
And then if I understand this correctly, everybody else's taxes are going down slightly.
The proportion hasn't changed, it's still forty point some.
Proportion for?
On the assessment that it attacked.
That has not changed, no, no. So all, all we're, we're just dealing with the assessed values of properties and the mill rate per that calculation.
And the government sets the proportion of that assessment that we could use.
Yeah, we have no.
No control.
It's no control over it, so. So slide thirty-two, I'm going to print that as well with the correct number on that. Okay, that's coming.
That Minnetonka's adventure is at our lagoon?
Yeah, phase two of the lagoon, yeah. See, if I'm reading this right, we're collecting, or proposing to collect another nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars over last year. Because last year we collected total actual. Oh, sorry, this, maybe this is twenty-three, is it? Previous year.
This one here is a twenty-four, and it took one point six increase. In general operating revenue.
Total actual. Only we budgeted four point six last year.
Okay, that's the comparison, just pass that down. And that corrects the rural title that was on the one. I'll just hand it on to one for Deanne, pass that down. That slide. Sorry? Are you going short?
Nope.
Okay. And then the other one's coming. The printer's just really slow, so. Oh, the rural one on the bottom left, that one title was corrected?
Oh, it used to be at-large, yeah.
It used to be at-large, yeah.
But the numbers haven't changed.
The numbers haven't changed, no. It was just the title that was corrected. And then the other one, which I'm still waiting for in the printer, is the mill rates. Actually, I think it's coming now, one second.
So much for jumping up and down. Okay, the numbers have changed.
Well, I'm not sure yet, there, yeah.
It's the same thing.
So is this number, or is this the one that's a question yet from Larry Lang? Twenty twenty-four, total municipal revenue of four point six million. And this year they're proposing four point two million, correct?
There you go.
At-large. So we, so we actually four hundred thousand less.
And that's the question I've got to Larry, because, but I saw that number. Because, but I saw that number had changed. I know the data you typed into the model is correct, but it did change, so I just want to confirm with them that basically this is calculated correctly in that, in that field.
So as of right now, if I'm looking at this rate, last year's four point six we collected for revenue, Trevor?
Um.
On the long sheet here.
Long sheet.
Just total municipal revenue, we budgeted to collect four point six five, right? Because if I know the total dollars are in the right direction, I'm pretty confident that everybody's going to be fairly good here.
Yeah.
Because like you say, the percentage hasn't really altered a whole bunch, has it, at the end of the day?
Yeah, we're, if these numbers are all right, we're actually looking to collect less this year than last year.
Than last year.
Yeah.
About four hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which makes sense if everybody's taxes are going down except the town of Minutonus is going slightly up.
That would make total sense then.
Yeah.
So that, there should be a significant increase in twenty-six because that's where our biggest capital expenses are with the greater factor, yada, yada, and Lagoon.
There'd be Deventures and, yeah.
And there'd also be reserve, we'd have some reserves that we draw as well.
Right.
So we'd be able to incorporate that, plus also the, we, because we hadn't applied for our gas tax, like it's per capita based and we did our financial statements, so twenty-two, we can take the first part of twenty-three, the first draw, and the second part twenty-two.
Yeah.
But we never actually applied for our second draw in twenty-two, or sorry, first draw in twenty-two and the second draw in twenty-one. So I've sent a letter, Larry, you'd sign that letter, we'd send it out. We're sending our financial statements, so we're, we've got that money coming as well. So this year is no money from reserves. We put it in reserves, we save it up for next year, and that's basically to help with some of those big-ticket item purchases.
Okay. I'm just going to come over just beside you for one question here, just.
Grab both papers.
Here, sit here.
Okay.
There you go.
Carefully, don't let you move again.
I'm getting at, I am closer to the door than he is now. So if I'm reading this right, last year's total revenue that we budgeted for, if Larry's number's right, is this, right? The four point six, that was revenue collected.
Last year was here, three point three zero six.
But this is twenty-four.
Yep, and on the model they gave us, they didn't update the number.
Well, so this is actually twenty.
This is twenty-five, but the title, they never updated the titles, so that was the other request. So all those say, this says twenty-four, this is, this is twenty-five.
This is twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, that's not good.
Oh, okay, no.
Then we're a million dollars short.
Because this year, for, this, this number should be for the four point two four four likely than here then.
Mm-hmm.
So we're nine hundred thousand, we're actually trying to collect nine hundred thousand more then.
So this is the previous year, so this is the.
Yeah.
Two thousand to twenty-four, this is the twenty-five, and this graph was done prior to our last revision.
Okay.
So when Council requested the single at-large rate, that's when he actually ran the math, but we've done more work since this number was here.
Okay, I'll put the lower one down here for now anyways.
So this is the number as of what the model's reporting. Four point six nine five million dollars.
Are we thinking it's this one though?
No, this was, uh, this was from Larry's, uh.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, this is, yeah, this is from Larry's model when he gave us the example breakdown, so.
After the, the alterations?
Well, his email came in on, I had it here. Oh, right here. So December sixtieth, that's when he sent it, so he probably did it a couple days before. But we're now, we've done more, we've done, we've had two strategy sessions, plus the work, takeaway work that I did over this last, first week of January. So basically, these numbers here.
That should be last yet then.
Yeah, so these numbers here don't reflect our current numbers, this was basically where we were December sixteenth.
Okay.
So when we finalize, we'll update these numbers to reflect, but where we were in December sixteenth is what those numbers are.
Those numbers are.
Yeah.
Okay.
This PowerPoint isn't connected in. Our pie, our pie charts and our line graphs automatically pop, I built that functionality in where we change something here, they change automatically.
Okay.
But this table here does not. This was based on his.
So I guess we're going to have to wait to see those next set of numbers and not really see how that compares to this here.
So the, is this column here, is this twenty twenty-four taxes collected?
Yeah.
That's twenty twenty-four.
Budgeted, yeah. That's two thousand twenty-four, and then on the right is two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, and that title, because they didn't index it by one, similar to the five-year capital plan.
Yeah, I got you.
They, it does draw you off, but it is the, it should say two thousand twenty-five.
So we're roughly looking at needing to collect one point three million more this year than last year.
Yes.
Just like, if we figured right from, right from the start, hey, with this chart, one point three.
See, Trevor.
What if I did with the actual of last year's comparison, where they want, worked out to one point three?
Yeah, this here was December sixteenth.
Yeah.
This year.
Fifteenth to the fourteenth, actually, is my guess.
December, let's go fifteenth, yeah. So that number, that is down to four point two as of December fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
But we've done some work since then, so this should actually be coming down. So I think what we got to do now is see what this number drops down to and then how it compares to this number over here.
Yeah.
And then see what we're going to have to do.
So we know if we got to tighten our belt more or what we got to do.
Yeah.
Are we talking thirty days?
Uh, we are.
Going into using this?
Yeah, we're about a month back.
Yeah.
When this number was, was, when Larry provided this number, so we've done work since.
Yeah.
And like Trevor said, a fair bit is, is to come down, so.
Because we had our two, our two in-camera budget meetings as well, we, we went through all that as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we, yeah, we'll just have to wait, I think now, to see what that number is and then what we got to do here.
Got any chair back, Larry?
I'm thinking, Trevor, once you have that number, if you could email us, so we can start thinking whether we're trimming or how badly we're trimming, we can start the wheels turning.
That's Larry. Yep.
Where we're looking and in what areas and stuff, yeah.
That's where we were putting the stars beside when we actually started, so we need a quick reference to go back.
Here, I was getting all excited that we nailed it and we didn't have to worry about the stars.
And then I got looking, is the total dollars here?
I should have put a date in that slide, per, per Larry Lang's date, yeah.
Yeah, though that's fine, and what, actually, you know what confused me a bit more was the twenty twenty-four on this one here. Because, okay, where are we exactly, but no, that, that helped me out.
I think it makes sense now, yeah.
Yeah. When would, oh, when will we be getting together again, Trevor?
Oh, the date, yeah.
Do you have a proposal for date?
Uh, we actually, we already have a date scheduled, it's in your calendars, so the date is January fourteenth. And that's basically the two thousand twenty-five Financial Plan Council Review Session Number Four, if needed, following Committee of the Whole meeting.
Okay.
So we always book a meeting after as a, as a potential, it should be in your calendars.
Oh, so next Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday, yeah.
Okay.
And Larry was on the.
I'm going to put that in my actual phone calendar now.
Probably got a meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, you do, Larry?
Right.
I got Tuesday and the fourteenth as a G four meeting.
That was the original one that people.
That was the original.
That's not, that's not happening, yeah, on that date.
Did you have a committee meeting somewhere in there?
No, it's not a committee, it's on, yeah, it's with the Ag Society, but I could, uh, I can make this one here.
Ours here?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we booked him, it's the, in your calendars, it's the two thousand twenty-three Financial Plan Council Review Session Number Four. It, it's, you've got it in your calendar.
Yeah, I saw it there, it's been booked.
Yeah, it's booked, it's already booked.
And we're booked on the sixteenth, you and I.
Watershed sixteenth. Okay, and this will be at five thirty on the fourteenth?
Yeah, I think five thirty-six, we, let's book like a regular strategy session and if we finish early, great, if we've got the time.
Is that one going to be open to the public as well?
The, we're required to do one Committee of the Whole meeting, which we've done, so this one would be back in camera, and we're basically preparing for our first reading, which will be similar to what we did here, basically, but the difference being the documents will be made public the day before.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking is because I asked around a little bit today and I didn't find anybody who knew about this meeting tonight.
It was, uh, it's been on our.
On our website, right?
Yeah, on our website.
Is it anywhere else?
On our website, and we posted the agenda one day before per, per our operations file out. So that was posted, it's on our website, um, yeah.
I went to Needen's to pick up pizza for supper tonight, and a lady there suggested, would it be possible to put a notice at the post office and at the community store a couple of days or a week before? I don't know what's our best practice, but.
Typically.
The post office, like they stopped allowing.
Oh, do they stop?
I don't know if they did, but for a while there they did because Brandon wasn't allowed to put any notices of anything up, unless she was, you know, one up, but I don't know, just kind of watch.
I just seen one that the Baptist Church is looking for a cook or something in the door, it's the only one I see, so maybe they are yet.
I don't know.
Yeah.
That was just her suggestion, so I said I'd mention it, just because people would like to know, and they don't object to the website.
Well, we, we could put, um, we put notices on like boil water advisory, but the point is, is unless someone subscribes to our website, they won't get those popping up in their phones. So we could.
Oh, yeah, those push notifications or whatever.
So we can push these meetings as well. Um, we've never done Committee of the Whole or Council meeting pushes before, but we, nothing to say we can't do it.
Doesn't matter what extent you go to, there's still people that say, well, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
You could have a plane flying with a big ribbon behind meeting, I didn't see it.
Did Council want to push notice?
I don't really know how many people would, if you're not checking your computer.
Yeah.
And you're not subscribed to the municipal website that way and set up, you're not going to get it anyways then.
But we could tell people then, they have to go subscribe and they get notified for stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know.
You know, would be good to have them on that for all kinds of things.
Like, we kind of made a big deal out of it when Dean and Larry were here that we were going to do these meetings beforehand, but if nobody knows about it.
Yeah, that's a good way to, because then they would have all municipal happenings through the push notification then.
So, um, do you want Facebook as well, or?
I'm not a Facebook user, so I read.
All right.
Yeah.
You might as well, what's it going to hurt?
Yeah.
Yeah, what we, sorry, Clint?
Yeah, Facebook for sure.
Okay.
Lots of people use Facebook.
Okay. Yeah.
So how about, um, we just make it where it's across the board for all council meetings, doesn't matter what it's for? We're already putting the, we've already posted the agendas onto, onto our website. We're already, we've already got the public notification page of our website basically saying that this is our schedule for meetings.
This is our yearly schedule, I've seen that on there, oh, yeah.
So that's all, we've been doing that for almost a year now, so.
Yeah.
At this stage, we could just basically put in Facebook saying council meeting this date here, just send it out, we'll, we'll get more people, we won't get everybody, but basically we'll get more people, and then we can do the push. The late problem with the push though is if you, if you're continually pushing notices out, people are just going to get annoyed, they're, they're to unsubscribe, and that's.
Well, I'm thinking not, not to push regular council meetings. Anybody who cares knows when our regular council meetings are.
Just a special open house or a meeting like, that's important.
Because it's exactly what Trevor says, I do that too.
You get sick of that.
Get too many emails from someone, you just put them to spam and get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Okay.
So Facebook and just special events on the push then.
And I get no push notifications from municipalities at all.
I haven't got one either.
And I've signed up on the website.
Okay, I'll take that.
I just tried to sign up again and already told me I am, and yeah, I don't get anything.
I'll, I'll talk to AllNet, but, um, by understanding how the website works, and that's how it was promoted to us, was basically you can register and you can actually do it right on our main page.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Which you showed us how to do it one night at a council meeting.
Well, I showed you where to go, I didn't show you how, because I have no clue how to do it.
I did it. I set up, yeah, maybe.
I never got a notice.
You get nothing, okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take as a takeaway to contact AllNet about push notices, but, um, I think we've got like fifty to eighty, maybe ninety people who are registered. I know, uh, people from our province get them because they call me, uh, so it's not like, um, uh, when I was first hired, Dean, because part of the contract, recruiting contract, they were monitoring the website, so they were getting everything.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, like I know they're out there because they, they be touching base on that stuff, so. At this stage, I'll, I'll check with them, uh, with AllNet and see, just to confirm that those are going out, but it's basically going to be for the posts. Do you guys get any, maybe just out yourselves, but you've heard people getting boil water advisories, stuff like that, because we push those as well. Like all of our updates like that, we, we push everything, and we put Facebook as well.
I just seen it on the municipal webpage, I'm set up for pushing, I never got it either, Trevor. So maybe it's a problem with the program or the operating system.
Some people are getting it, maybe it was working for a while and then it quit.
Yeah, because I set up that night here just to yawn and I never, ever, yeah.
And I did once go check my spam, but I haven't since then, there was nothing in my spam.
Yeah.
I know our daily website traffic tracking thing, that module, it's on, it works then it doesn't work, and it'd be like, it'll be down for like five days, it'll come back again, so, yeah.
Who's, uh, AllNet runs that?
Yeah, AllNet, yeah. That's pretty much where everybody.
Runs off, yeah.
Most municipalities run off it unless you're, unless they build their, their custom solutions, like, uh, I think Saskatoon and Brandon have their own, they, they've got their own IT department, so that's why, so, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, forget this in someone order, you can check.
Can everybody bring your.
Packages?
Packages with their stars on it.
Yes.
Bring the one with all the stars, do you want us to bring this one too?
Sure.
Yeah.
This is being recorded, Nick, or?
Yeah, AllNet, yeah.
Will it be posted for the public also?
Yeah, that'll be on tomorrow, we'll, we'll get it on, yeah, exactly. Uh, I suggest in the packages though, maybe put the dates because they look very similar, so put on that package there, that would have been the last council meeting.
Like these?
Yep, what you have right there was sent to you guys, uh, the in-camera portion for last meeting, which was January seventh, actually, correction, yeah, seventh.
I thought this would be my old, first versions.
No, we also have an in-camera session coming up too, so.
Yes, that would be my first version, and this will be my lead version. There.
Okay, be ready to roll with the Financial Plan Resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Resolution zero one eight, be resolved that draft two thousand twenty-five Financial Plan Presentation be accepted as presented, mover and the seconder. Gary, seconded by Derek, all in favor, carry it. Do you want a water or something? Now we're moving into camera?
Yeah, we'll be going in camera as soon as you do the resolutions.
Okay. Do you want a water?
Please.
Okay.
Uh, no, I'm good.
Derek?
I gotta read that one thing out again.
You gotta read the whole thing, because it's being recorded, yeah.
Resolution zero one nine, to go into camera, be resolved that pursuant to section one five two three of Municipal Act, despite subsections one, two, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public were. and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public would prejudice the municipality Minnetonahs Bozeman ability to carry out its activities or negotiations pursuant to section eighty-three one D. Council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection one five two three, until a matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety-four one H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching a requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty-three one D. A mover and a seconder, to go into camera, carried, seconded by Gail, all in favor, carried, going into camera at eight.
Eight thirteen.
Resolution zero two zero, to move out of camera, read resolved at pursuant to section one fifty-two four of Municipal Act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at
nine o'clock.
Moved by Gail, seconded by Ken, all in favor, carried. Adjournment. Resolution zero twenty-one, be resolved at this committee of a whole meeting, be adjourned at nine...
Yeah, still nine.
...o'clock, moved by Gail, seconded by Clint, all in favor, carried. Meeting adjourned.